... strategies throughout, uh, strategy, strategy, the, the, the numbers both throughout because we don't have, you know, one of these spread this, uh, like steps.
Council President, we're live.
When you see increases of one side, you see increases of the other side. And that's always, that's, that's, that's.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, home of the University of North Dakota. This is the Grand Forks City Council Special Council Agenda, Special Meeting Monday, September fourteenth, under Item One, General Business, one point one, welcome and roll call.
Okay, I can do that. Weigel?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber? Is Weber in attendance?
He's not here.
Hey, Mock?
Here.
Cavani?
Absent.
All right, and President Sandy?
Here.
And, and, and Mr. Veen?
I'm here.
All right, we have a call.
Thank you. Under Item two point one, public hearing and second reading of an ordinance relating to the twenty twenty-one budget, including adoption of a resolution establishing the twenty twenty-one fees and approval of participating in the Andy Pears Public Safety Retirement Plan for eligible employees. Mayor Bucinski?
Thank you, Council President Sandy, and thanks for stepping in today and running today's meeting. I just want to say a big thank you to, uh, well, both the council, city departments, and the citizens of Grand Forks. We had a very tight, fast-paced timeline after the June election to get this done. It seems like, uh, time has really flown since then, but there was a, there was a lot of work, and we got it done pretty quickly. The twenty twenty-one budget emphasizes our support of essential services of public safety, public works, water works, and public health. Um, I appreciated you with all the city department heads and, uh, getting their feedback and, uh, their operational expertise on how we can both provide great services but do it at, uh, the best price possible for our citizens. Um, let's see here. We ended up with a point seven eight mil reduction and minimal increase in utilities, which was pretty exciting. We were able to add the Public Safety Retirement Plan, which I think is the right thing to do, especially, uh, in these times, I think, as a recruitment tool and as a way to keep employees. I think it's very exciting we're able to get that done this year. We're also able to add a small raise for all city employees, uh, despite the difficult, um, revenue side and the unknowns there. Um, this budget, uh, definitely looks at, uh, infrastructure as an importance, uh, community and economic development investments were kept in full. I think, uh, the cities performed extremely well during this pandemic and looking forward to the future. One thing I would like to note is that, uh, we did receive CARES funding as a reimbursement for twenty twenty shortfalls, and that helped give us, uh, more funding to public health, uh, some funding we're able to send to, that we're going to be able to send to the school district and some other one-time expenditures, such as the Siren, the state interoperable radio network, and some other reimbursements. So with that, I'm pretty excited about it, and I'll kick it over to Marine to add anything else that I may have forgotten.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Marine.
Good evening, President Sandy. Thank you, Mayor. Um, boy, you've covered it pretty good. I'm just gonna go through my notes real quick, 'cause it has been kind of a little while since we have had, um, budget discussions and preliminary approval. Um, tonight, we look for final approval of the mayor's twenty twenty-one budget, um, and I also want to just thank, um, all of you, um, for your input through this process. And yes, it was a tight timeline, but we did, um, include, um, your thoughts and concerns and input throughout the process, and want to thank, uh, departments as well. Um, but maybe just as a recap, uh, the mayor's budget was, was previewed with council July thirteenth, presented in its entirety July twentieth. Uh, we had follow-up budget discussion, which was held July twenty-seventh at our community of the whole meeting. We based, uh, based on that conversation, the mayor did, as he stated, include and, and adjusted the budget to include the Andy Pears Public Safety Pension Plan for those, uh, that are eligible to be in that plan and to help offset, yes, um, those employees, um, agreed to forego the, the thousand-dollar salary increase to help offset that additional cost. Uh, preliminary approval was given on August third, and in summarizing the budget in total, it's a hundred and seventy-eight point four million, um, as compared to the twenty twenty budget of a hundred and eighty-nine point five million, which is a decrease of five point eight three percent. Uh, general fund portion of this makes up twenty-three percent of your total budget. Uh, that's forty point seven million down from twenty twenty amount of forty-one point four million or a one point eight three percent decrease. Um, a majority by far, um, of your general fund budget is your public safety, public health, um, streets, operations, engineering, at, uh, seventy-eight percent when looking at all those areas. Um, so just some of the highlights, the mayor already stated, it includes a slight mil decrease of point seven eight mils, which means a slight decrease in property tax for the average homeowner. Uh, your median value home will pay about seven two, seventy-two dollars a month, um, for city services. Um, we did have a thousand dollars, uh, cross-the-board increase, um, rather than moving forward with the salary plan, um, as the mayor stated. Um, the promotions and restructures that were included are included, summed up in your staff report with bullet points for your reference. Um, we continue the internship program with U N D with a fifty-fifty cost share. We continue to partner with the school district, uh, community service officers, approximately fifty-fifty percent on that. Um, those are five community service officers, um, as we did, uh, also, uh, this year, and that means one in each, in each, uh, school. Uh, we continue to cost share on the social detox center. That cost share for the city is about eighty-five thousand. Um, continue to support services provided by the C B I C, uh, that is two hundred and ten thousand. Economic Development Fund, we continue to support airbase, arts events, E D C. Um, there is no annual allocation for beautification, but we have a reserve fund that we can draw upon, um, when needed. We did, as discussed earlier, um, discontinue the funding of the welcoming position, but we do have fifteen thousand dollars included for the welcoming initiative. Um, your budget binder that, uh, includes much of the detail, um, for you on streets, flood protection, public building funds, C I Ps, utility rate increases were kept to a minimum, um, with a six thousand gallon a month user, um, those are increasing just eighty-one cents a month or eight point eight four percent. Um, all those fees are included and are also up for approval. Um, for your reference, um, we've reattached any and all material that has previously been presented. Um, we do, um, have, I have received no comments as far as from the public. Um, I, I would ask, uh, President Sandy, who's there in person, if anybody is there to comment, um, at the public hearing regarding the, the budget, but we have not received any comments in finance. Um, I'm open to questions, um, otherwise, um, what we look to tonight is final approval of the budget and the fees. Um, I would also ask for a separate motion and second in regards to, um, entering the Andy Pears Public Safety Pension Plan. With that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Starsted. Any questions for either the mayor or the Director of Finance for the city from council? I haven't received any comments from the public. I don't know if anyone's here interested in commenting on the twenty twenty-one budget tonight. Seeing none, okay. Any council comments in general regarding the twenty twenty-one budget? Mr. Weber?
Impressive work during trying times.
Yeah, I would agree. Uh, anyone else have any comments or care to make a motion? Mr. Weigel?
I'll, I'll just briefly, um, just want to say thank you to the mayor, um, Tangi, everybody in H R, um, Marine, um, Mr. Phelan, everybody did a, a fantastic job, uh, getting the budget ready and then, um, also including our public safety plan. I, I think this goes a long way in allowing us to recruit the best firefighters and police officers that we can for our community. I think it, it goes a long ways to show, um, a lot of their sacrifice and, and what they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. Um, and it's a great retirement plan that, that I personally think we should have been on all along, but we weren't. Um, we're here to, to fix that and get it in this budget, and then, um, I'm excited to see where it goes.
Thank you, Mr. Weigel. So was that a, uh, motion for either the budget or the Andy Pears Retirement Plan?
I will, uh, make a motion for the Andy Pears Retirement Plan.
There's a second from Mr. Weber. Any other comments regarding entering the Public Safety Retirement Plan?
Just a quick thank you to Mr. Weigel for his leadership on this as well.
Yeah, excellent.
Council President Sandy, could I add one thing real quick?
Of course, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, you know, one other thing I think is really important to look at here is, is, uh, we've got firefighters right now that are on their way out to Oregon to help out, uh, fires out there, and having a pension plan that, that protects them, keeps them safe, and keeps them comfortable, and, uh, having a fire chief that was willing to answer that call and ask for volunteers, and we got twenty-seven volunteers, we only needed four. So I think that's another great, uh, great thing to see our fire department doing, and I'm glad we can support them with, uh, with this as well.
I agree. Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments regarding the Andy Pears Plan? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, so is there anyone discussion related to the twenty twenty-one budget?
Move approval.
Mr. Veen moves approval. Is there a second by Mock? Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone involved in the twenty twenty-one budget. Exceptional. Moving on, under Item Three, Action Items, three point one, COVID nineteen update and Grand Forks County Health Officers Dashboard Consideration. Mr. Mayor, comments?
Yes, thank you again, uh, Council President Sandy. I just want to say before we get too far into this that I do really respect all the value that has gone to the public health officer's dashboard. It's been an amazing, uh, locally-driven tool with, uh, and it's a great supplement to the governor's dashboard, and, uh, it's been something that, uh, has been very effective, very helpful. Um, we're getting, uh, updates at council, uh, weekly. Um, I think a lot of us are getting the, the daily updates and not only able to watch that but to watch the trends. I've been, uh, very impressed with the work on, on, and everyone that was involved with it. I think it is a great tool. It's one of many tools. Uh, the expert panel themselves even stated that, uh, this is a tool of many enabled, many in a, in a way to make, uh, policy, uh, decisions. So I think it is, it's a great tool, but it is, it is one of many tools and not a definitive tool. So I would, uh, as we go forward to look to a vote, uh, I would recommend that we keep using it in the way that we are, but, uh, to table this as a, as a further adaptation of, uh, of some sort of, uh, singular tool. So that would be my, uh, impression on it, and, uh, we'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so regarding the presentation tonight, Mr. Doolitz? Good evening.
Uh, Council President Sandy, uh, Mayor, members of the council, uh, I'm Michael Doolitz, I'm the Upbeat Response Project Coordinator, and I'm pinch-hitting, uh, assisting with COVID, uh, data analysis. Uh, I'm gonna give you a quick update on the dashboard and then answers, uh, some questions that I've received over the course of the week in relation to the health officer dashboard. Uh, so looking at the health officer dashboard, uh, we continue to be on a downward trend with our health officer dashboard score. Um, we're very close to moving into a yellow on, uh, the total score. Um, you know, I would anticipate this week that we will be able to move down into a yellow based off of a decrease in the number of new cases that we're seeing in, uh, Grand Forks County. Um, and I recently added the, the change arrow to give you an idea of where things have gone since the day before, um, so that's just simply a look at the day before on, uh, on the trend. Um, our percent change continues to be, um, are showing a downward trend, our tests completed continue to be strong, um, and our percent positivity is on a downward trend as well. Uh, looking at our numbers from, uh, that were reported today, from yesterday, uh, we had thirty-two new cases, which is an increase. Um, we, uh, still had a high number of tests completed, even though it was a weekend, um, and percent positivity was a little bit higher for, uh, yesterday, um, and we have two hundred and sixty-two active cases, uh, in Grand Forks County. Uh, again, looking at the health officer dashboard, as I mentioned, we're on a, a nice downward trend. I hope that we can get down into yellow this week, um, with the decreasing number of cases, um, and then the percent change, um, looking at the score itself, um, does continue to show that downward trend as well. Our average number of cases, we did peak at over ninety cases per hundred thousand, and just to clarify, per hundred thousand is just a way for us to express a rate that can be compared to other locations. So we have about seventy thousand people in, uh, Grand Forks County, so if you're wondering what our actual number is, um, your actual average, you just take that by essentially point seven, um, to get an idea of where we're at. Um, I also use, uh, per ten thousand rates as well, and that's just moving the decimal, decimal point one, um, one spot, uh, to, uh, get down to that ten thousand rate. The governor uses rates per ten thousand, um, I've been using rates per hundred thousand. Governor uses rates per ten thousand because we have a lot of rural counties in the state. Rates per hundred thousand are, are what we use because we are, you know, relatively comparable size-wise to, um, you know, what gets compared on a national level. Uh, looking at a number of tests per hundred thousand, we continue to be relatively strong. We've had a, a small decrease from our peak with the start of school, uh, but I would anticipate we will still, um, you know, stay very safely in the green, uh, area with the number of testings that have been scheduled looking forward. Uh, looking at, uh, the percent change, again, that's on that, oh, sorry, the percent positivity, uh, that is on a downward trajectory, which is, uh, very good. Uh, the, uh, percent change is one of the factors that does make a big difference, um, moving the dashboard since it is weighted relatively high. Um, so if we keep up with, uh, the decreasing number of cases as well as the, um, strong testing program, uh, we could see that very easily go down into the, into the green, which would be less than one percent. And our percent change again is on its, uh, way down. Uh, comparing, uh, Grand Forks to other North Dakota metro areas, uh, this is the state of North Dakota. We continue to be on kind of an upward, uh, swing unfortunately as a state. Uh, Grand Forks is now below the, uh, the state rate, um, which, uh, shows that we are moving in a good direction. Uh, Burley County tends to kind of, um, you know, set the, you know, set the bar for the state on the most number of cases, and their, their increase has been very steady, whereas ours was more of a peak. Uh, Cass County has also been seeing an increase, um, some of that has been tied to N D S U, some of that has been tied to community spread. Uh, and then Ward County, uh, it looked like they had a small peak, they dipped back down, and now they're, uh, on the way back up again. Um, as far as I know, they are attributing that related to cases at Minot State University as well as a couple other locations in the community. Uh, what they see in Burley County is, um, as far as I'm aware, is widespread, kind of more community spread, um, so they've been seeing it in, you know, a variety of age groups, they've been seeing it in a variety of locations, um, you know, throughout the community, and I think that's why it's been a lot more sustained than ours, where, um, you know, a lot of it was, um, localized on a particular community. Um, and then looking at, uh, this is actually percent positivity, I didn't change the header. Um, so looking at, uh, comparison of percent positivity, uh, this is, uh, North Dakota, we're running, uh, the state of North Dakota is running, you know, closer to five percent, uh, for the percent positivity, and that's, uh, looking at the number of new cases in the numerator, number of, um, tests in the denominator. Um, so, uh, you know, we, you know, some, uh, some programs are looking at, you know, the number of, um, the number of, uh, new cases divided by the number of unique tests. We, we just use the same numerator and denominator, uh, to make sure that we're, um, comparable. Uh, Grand Forks, uh, again, we've been on that downward trend with our percent positivity. We're, um, about three percent right now, um, which is trending in a very, uh, good direction. Uh, looking at Bismarck Burley, they continue to increase, they're almost up to seven percent positivity, um, you know, which is obviously not a, a very heartwarming trend. Um, Cass County has been a little bit more variable. Um, you can see at their peak, uh, when they had an outbreak in, uh, May, they were up almost to nine percent, and now they're, um, well over five, um, similar to state average. And then Ward County has been, uh, going up as well, kind of matching with their increase in cases. Um, again, uh, a couple weeks ago, the, uh, the governor did, uh, change the risk levels and add the, uh, guiding metrics, um, to adding risk levels to each individual county, and so I have been doing my best to keep track of what the governor is looking at, to kind of compare that to what, um, our dashboard looks like. Uh, the methodology, I haven't gotten a full clarification of the methodology, so I am still using my best estimation. And Grand Forks is still in the yellow. Um, and then looking throughout the state, the governor did not make any changes to the, um, to the, uh, counties at risk, uh, during his news conference today. Uh, looking at the governor's, uh, uh, metrics, uh, what we're looking at is forty-eight point five average active cases per day per ten thousand population, and again, just make sure that you're, um, considering the difference, um, in looking at per ten thousand population. So we have roughly two hundred, uh, cases, active cases today, um, seventy thousand people, so, um, forty-eight point five is active cases, um, so that does, um, you know, that does jive fairly well. Uh, the fourteen-day sum of new tests per ten thousand population, that's about fourteen hundred, and, um, and again, we are doing between five and six thousand tests per week, so that, um, drives pretty well. Uh, the average, uh, percent positivity is about four point five percent. He's looking, uh, the governor's looking at fourteen days, we're looking at seven days, so that is still going to be a little bit higher compared to us. And I just wanted to touch a little bit, um, since we are discussing the health officer dashboard today, I did want to reiterate, uh, some of the components of the health officer dashboard, and then also attached to the agenda, I did include the, uh, methods document that I do use, um, when I, uh, put together the health officer dashboard. So the health officer dashboard uses three primary factors, the number of new cases, um, expresses a rate per hundred thousand, and that's a seven-day average, the percent positivity, and hospital capacity. Um, the primary indicator of spread is the number of new cases, the primary indicator of testing effectiveness is percent positivity. Um, that gives us a little bit better indicator than, uh, just tests themselves because it lets us know if we're, um, if we happen to be missing somebody or, you know, missing, uh, particular groups or things like that. Um, if we have a high percent positivity and a ton of tests, that means that we probably need to be testing more people, and the, the spread is a lot higher than what we think. Um, and then looking at hospital capacity, um, again, that is an indicator of healthcare capacity. Um, our hospital system is not the only provider of healthcare in the community. We also know that there's a big impact on long-term care related to COVID, uh, but, um, you know, they would be kind of a, a final stop for a lot of individuals, um, in kind of the, the chain of providing care for COVID nineteen. Uh, so we do want to make sure that, um, uh, the hospital's able to rapidly respond to surges in number of new cases, um, and it's not, um, you know, taxing the system to the point that they're having to delay care otherwise. Uh, secondary factors, the test score, um, and the percent change, those are kind of the modifying factors, so, um, it kind of, um, helps, uh, you know, nudge the score in one way or the other, depending on what, you know, the trends look like and if we're doing a good job at testing. Um, you know, our test score, um, we're doing a great job at testing compared to, uh, the nation, so, um, you know, that would be really hard to probably get out of, of green. The last time we would have been out of green would have been in, uh, June, um, in late June, and that was just a single day before that, I believe it was May. Um, and so that's a good, um, indicator, secondary indicator of tech, uh, testing effectiveness. Um, and then looking at percent change, um, that also gives us an idea of spread, gives us an idea of where our trends are going, and then, um, can modify the, the dashboard slightly, um, one way or the other. Um, so it doesn't have a big influence, but it does have an influence. So it doesn't have a big influence, but it does have an influence. You know, if we're seeing a lot of spread, we're going to, you know, want to look at the, you know, a slight increase in the dashboard because we're seeing, you know, a big increase in the number of cases. It's kind of a warning sign. Looking at our risk levels, one, one question that was brought up to me this week is, is the health officer dashboard designed to be in the yellow or in the orange all the time and it doesn't really give us any wiggle room? I don't believe that is the case, so I believe it is very possible for us to reach green. The last time we were in green was at the beginning of August and that was for four days at the beginning of August. If we look at the number of days historically, if we look at, you know, with our hospital capacity assumed to be green, we'd have about 60 out of 166 days, so about 36% of the days were actually in green. And those tended to be in, you know, relatively long periods of time. And then if we assume the hospital capacity to be at yellow, that would drop down to about 24 days. It is still possible for us to be in green as a community with the hospital system in yellow. So what does that look like getting to green based off of where we're at right now? If the hospital is in a green tier, we just need to keep our new case average less than 9.99 per 100,000. So we need to keep our average below seven cases per day in Grand Forks County, which is something that we have been able to do looking between June 1 and September 15th. We've had about 48 out of 105 days where we have had less than seven new cases per 100,000. And then we want to keep our percent positivity low and our testing percentage, we want to keep that and percent change in the green. If we look at the yellow tier, want to keep our percent positivity, or sorry, our new cases again, below seven cases per 100,000. The number of new cases is a primary driver on this. Want to keep our percent positivity below 3% and, and make sure to keep our testing and percent change at yellow or below. One has to be in green, one has to be in yellow or we can't hit that green level. On the other side, looking at the red level on the dashboard, the red level is actually kind of difficult for us to hit because, you know, when we look at spread in the community, one of the big concerns you see is the number of new cases that is going, that is going on. But once you get over 25 cases per 100,000, that kind of maxes that out as a factor in there. And then you are looking at other impacts that could happen in the community such as percent positivity as well as, you know, testing constraints and the trend in testing. And then finally, the hospital impact. So, you know, where we're at right now without, you know, a major impact on the hospital, just a minor impact on the hospital or that modified operation where they're nearing capacity. And so, you know, they are a little bit constrained, you know, so the, the green or yellow for the hospital. We'd have to have our cases be in red, our percent positivity be in orange or red, so above 4%. And we'd have to have a pretty significant constraint on either testing or on percent change. That's a little bit hard for me to, you know, demonstrate in words, but if we look at the table, one of the good parts about the health officer dashboard is using five factors where we can show very easily, you know, what different scores would make up a different level. So our key to keeping the health officer dashboard out of red, you know, where we're at right now is to make sure that we're keeping up with our, our testing. If we're keeping up with our testing, it's really hard for us to move into, it's really hard for us to actually move into red. Keeping testing up, percent positivity low and hospital impact low. Do you have any questions on either the health officer dashboard or on the numbers that I reported today?
Comments or questions? Yeah, Mr. Veen.
Yeah, just, just a question. You see, I know we're still, still in the higher level that the governor has placed us in. In some ways, we're better than some of the other communities, oh, Fargo at this point. Do you see, what do you think it's going to take for him to lower our color code?
So based off of my estimation of the methods that they're using, we are on a good downward trajectory since we're using 14, or since the governor uses 14-day trends, that kind of slows everything down compared to us. So we're showing a really good downward trend right now where it's a little bit slower on the governor's dashboard. So I do think that we're probably within, you know, a week, week and a half of, you know, falling out of the, the yellow for the governor and then falling into the green. Cass County, again, based off of my methods, and I haven't been able to fully confirm them yet, I believe they're still actually in a green right now. But the, on the western side of the state, Minot and Burleigh-Morton, they're the ones that are kind of escalating a little bit quicker into the yellow.
Do you, when would we have any impacts from the Labor Day weekend? When would, are they starting to show up now, do you think?
To, you know, I actually worked this past weekend as a contact tracer. And so some of the, the cases that we were seeing this weekend were related to Labor Day. So you have an exposure on a particular day, like Labor Day, generally five to seven days after that are when people start to show symptoms or that they would be most likely to test positive. You know, what we saw after the Fourth of July was a little impact right after the Fourth and then it kind of expanded from there and that I'm not sure of. So we're seeing the initial kind of impacts of it or we're seeing the initial spread that, you know, would have happened on that holiday. You know, but long-term, I can't really say where things are going to go from there.
Okay. What, right now, we, we're going in the right direction, I think. Do you have any, anything that's the reason why that we might be doing that because it's good news? Are we doing something different than we've done in the past that's kind of bringing it down like that?
I, I don't have a really good answer for that. I think what we were doing on like campus with the spread that was happening on campus, UND was getting people into isolation relatively quickly. They weren't putting them in a, you know, dorm environment, they're putting them in a hotel environment, which, you know, likely helped because then there was, you know, less incentive for people to try and get out of that, you know, out of that location because they're physically separated from campus. You know, those are factors that might have made a difference. You know, but it's hard to, you know, it's hard to, you know, put a finger on each individual intervention, but, you know, the, the good isolation program at UND likely made a big difference.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was kind of alluding to. It seems like what they've done and how quickly they reacted in their whole process, it seems to have worked quite well, even though we had that major spike. It's kind of come down almost as fast as it went up. It, it looks like, especially now as we look at the seven-day averages and the like, we'll see, of course, what happens now with the holiday weekend and where that would be.
And I think looking on the data side, we were very concerned about where things were going to end up going from there, you know, just because of the, you know, chances for individuals to infect other people and knowing that on-campus is generally an area, you know, we were seeing the spread happen on campus or, you know, related to college students, but we were, you know, we didn't know where things were going to go, if they were going to keep, you know, if the spread was going to keep happening or if we were going to see the results immediately of the isolation program and the quarantine program and things like that. And I think, you know, that's more of what we're seeing right now, fortunately.
I was wondering, maybe I missed this, is there still quite a bit of community spread happening or how are you seeing things through your contact tracing?
You know, looking, you know, in kind of general terms, you know, the proportion of, you know, individuals in that kind of 18 to 24 age group is going down as kind of the, you know, in comparison to the overall kind of spread. So it's a lot more of a variety of age groups that we're seeing, you know, more cases in. So, but we're seeing lower overall numbers. So, you know, it's not, you know, huge amount in the 18 to 24 age group and then small amounts in each one, it's more equal across.
Okay. Last question, is there any metric that you are watching most closely to give us some indication about what's to come?
Yeah, I, I do truly believe that the health officer's dashboard is giving us a good look in comparison to what is available to other locations throughout the state. You know, we've put a lot of work into it, we've had other jurisdictions very interested in it. So, you know, I think when you, you know, combine those metrics together into a score that you can use, I think that does, you know, that does give us a good idea on where we're going. And then, you know, kind of building those trends and stuff into it has been helpful as well. So I've been, you know, trying to look at it as a whole rather than, you know, as a particular number. Because, you know, when you get stuck on a particular number, it seems like, you know, the particular, you know, single number can change really quickly as we saw with the decrease in the number of new cases.
What about contact tracing?
So anyway, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Phelan, comment?
I was just going to point out the hospital color is in yellow, but, you know, if you looked, I don't know, over a month ago, it would have been green. And, and I think, just so everyone knows, they're not in yellow because of COVID, but they're in yellow because they are, they're busy and they need to be busy in order to pay the bills. And so I just want to make that remark is that they, they've stayed pretty steady and have not have increased hospitalizations because that was the hearken, you know, two weeks ago, we were going to see that. But they've remained consistent and at a good level, low, lower level. And their, their yellowness is related to really busy business.
Staffing, staffing issue.
And then the, the other issue is staffing issues, you know? And some of that I suspect relates to COVID, just like, you know, in the city or other businesses where people are close contacts. I just wanted to, you know, so everyone understands that. I think the other thing to point out is, Council President Sandy and council members, if you were here in March, you know, we shut down the whole economy because we didn't know what we didn't know. And I think now we're a lot smarter and even we're smarter locally. And I just want to make sure everyone understands what we may have done and, or what we did in March, be sure the heck aren't going to do in September because we're just smarter and we have more tools and we have more analytics and metrics. So I think even the mayor is trying to take more nuance into that and we really did take a blunt instrument to our, our, our country in March and we, we don't intend to do that again.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Other comments? Mr. Weber?
Sure. I have a question for Mr. Doolitz, if I may. As you know, I'm a big fan of the, the local, the public health officer's dashboard. It's, it's good that we're not looking at a single metric, but an interconnection of key metrics. One metric that it doesn't seem to me is currently being considered, and I might be wrong here, so I wanted to ask you about it. When we talk about new cases or positivity rates, we treat all new cases as though they're equal. And when we see a large number of new increases in the 20 to 29-year age group, that is not, for me, qualitatively the same as a large number of increases in the 50 to 70-year-old group, for instance. To what degree are you currently considering age groups in, in your weighting of these different metrics?
So the, the mayor has, kind of has his areas where he has been emphasizing, you know, some of the metrics that he's been following. And one of those areas is the, looking at the group over age 60 and seeing where cases are trending in that age group. You know, breaking it down further by age group, you know, it's, you know, we're technically challenged right now in that we don't have a good, or we don't have good historical data looking at that, you know, looking at the different age groups in a, in a manner that's publicly available. So we would have to be, you know, asking for that on each individual basis. And I think we'd have a hard time getting that data from the state. So that is kind of a limitation in what we, you know, in what we can provide. You know, one of the good parts about, you know, the dashboard as is, is it gives us something that we can compare across jurisdictions relatively easily. And then, you know, if we are trying to, you know, compare with different states and stuff like that, it makes it a little bit easier because we're using, you know, data that's so widely available. So, you know, we've made a lot of progress on our data availability, but I, I think it'll be really hard for us to, you know, be able to get it broken down really well in, into, or by ages.
That's unfortunate. I appreciate all the work that you've done and I look forward to getting weekly updates from you. As it's possible, I hope that you'll continue to strive to get that age group data because I think that's going to be a really important metric for us to consider. With that, I'd like to speak to my motion a couple of weeks ago then, if this is a good time for that.
Certainly. Mr. Phelan had a comment first, however.
Council President Sandy, I think that's a very good comment on the age demographics and we'll have to give the mayor some credit, he was the first one to bring this up. The governor brought that up in his news conference today and he specifically mentioned Grand Forks' positivity rates are in that 18 to 29 age group. And what his big worry is in Burleigh-Morton County, is it's in that 60 and above category. So obviously we're very, we have different populations here. So he did reference those age categories are an important piece for him to look at, where to put different areas of the, of the state of North Dakota.
Very good. Again, thank you for the, the public health dashboard. It's transparent where not all of our indicators have been. You're, it's a tremendous amount of work for you to keep that updated. We, we get daily updates and they're, they're greatly appreciated. And again, this weighing of, of multiple factors is an important part of the work that's done there. So my appreciation to you, to Debbie Swanson and to our public health officer, Dr. Walz. These are difficult times for people in public health. You're experiencing the spotlight in ways that are normally reserved for star hockey players or elected officials. I don't know if you can put them in the same group, but suddenly you're, you're under that kind of microscope and it's not what you signed on for when you signed on for this job, but thank you. This is an important tool that we've used to welcome back UND students. So my congratulations to Governor Burgum. I've said from the beginning, we can't wait for the federal government or the state government to come save us, but we've had great leadership from the governor, especially in terms of testing. North Dakota continues to be one of the top states in the country for testing and this has been an important part of his plan and President Armikos' plan. He's made fantastic use of that. And, and my thank you to Mayor Vuchensky for his recent policies and his focus on this age issue. The current downward trend, I think, gives us a tremendous reason for cautious optimism. The last few days, national media have been portraying North Dakota and our city in a very negative light. I think that that was a story that actually was from a few days ago and they're just now catching it, then they're missing a lot of the important news. Unlike our local dashboard, which looks at multiple factors, those national stories have tended to focus on single indicators. So our, our local dashboard will help us to monitor these specific local circumstances. And if we see increases in community spread, especially among older age groups, we need to consider revising our protocols in relation to our local dashboard. Otherwise, I'm hopeful that national media will pay attention when we demonstrate that ours is a college town that has successfully dealt with an outbreak and that our success will be recognized. And with that, I'd move to table indefinitely the motion that I made a couple of weeks ago. I'm convinced that we will continue to receive updates, that we will consider, continue to consider that information both as a council and, and our mayor. And so we can bring it back up at any time if necessary, but for now, I would move that we table that indefinitely. Thank you, Council President Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. There's a motion to table on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same to sign. Motion carries unanimously. There isn't council comments on the agenda, but I'm going to ask for comments, Mr. Weigle. Anything tonight?
Nothing.
Ms. Doppler?
No.
Mr. Weber?
My last week or so on the UND campus, I've only seen students wearing masks both indoors and outdoors. So I'd like to thank the UND students for helping support the community.
Mr. Veen? Ms. Ma?
Last thing I'll mention is, I really appreciate city staff, of course, all of the city employees. It's certainly the staff that worked very hard to put together the budget for next year. Of course, with the mayor's leadership, I think it's a very sound budget that provides good quality services at a reasonable price for all of our employees. Thank you to the HR folks that helped work through some significant issues. Moving to the Indy-Purs as well as helping us get raises for all of our city staff. I think anybody that's driving around town right now sees what the piles on the boulevards and recognizes that city employees affect us every day in many ways, most of the time we don't even know. And every time I take a shower, I'm thankful that the water turns on. So thank you as well as, we should mention again, the mayor mentioned it earlier, good luck and, and please be safe to the firefighters that are heading out to Oregon to, to help the communities out there that need some help. Any other comments? I have no citizen comments here. I see several people in the audience that were perhaps here to, to speak tonight. I'll open up the, unless there's a specific topic during the committee of the whole meeting that you're interested in speaking to. that you're interested in speaking to.
No, not really.
Is anybody interested in speaking tonight at all?
No.
No? Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
I would like to speak.
Please step up to the microphone. Three minutes.
Councilman, thank you. I'm just wondering, we had a pretty passionate group of us that came last week and had some important things that were on our heart. So what happens from there? I mean, what happens to that information that we share and our concerns? You know, we're really concerned about the children and what's happening in the schools? I mean, if the masks work, then why do they still have to live in such isolation still in the midst of that with the football and the, whatever the big game is that they have?
Sure, yeah. Christian classic.
You know, all these things, all these activities that they have. And so it's, not to mention all the other traumatized children, especially the young ones. So I guess I really have a question as opposed to making any kind of a comment.
Sure.
I'd like to know that something's happening of some sort or that our pleas are going somewhere.
Well, of course, the city council has authority over city activities and city employees. The school board has the authority over the school district and students in the schools.
So that's really where we need to be addressing most of those kinds of concerns?
I believe based upon the comments that you made last week, I think that, and of course, we are in relatively constant contact with several of the people that are on the school board as well as the administration with Dr. Brenner. I know the mayor, Mr. Phelan administration are, we're working together to try to find solutions. And I don't know, I haven't directly relayed your concerns, but I certainly know that the school district has heard similar concerns as yours dozens, if not hundreds, of times.
Sure.
And so I believe that they are doing, I can only imagine they're doing the best that they can right now with the information that they have, but if you have more specific concerns, I would suggest going to a school board meeting.
Okay.
I believe there's one going on right now.
Oh.
Yes, and then Mr., six o'clock.
Oh.
Yeah, it starts at six o'clock.
Where is that?
Down at the Mark Sanford Education Center, 47th Avenue South.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate the tip.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else have comments? Please come up to the podium. Three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Scott Reinhardt, I've been here a couple of different times.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Are you going to provide new information tonight or the same information you provided the last few times you spoke?
Nope, it'll be a little, it'll be newer.
Great, thank you. Please proceed.
If you don't mind.
Not, I don't mind at all.
Okay, fantastic. So let me ask you, do we mask up for the S.H.I.E. flu at all? Is any, not really, too much at all? Okay.
I believe in Western society, no, but if you were in Asia, they mask up whenever they're sick, all over, all over Asia.
Right, right, I understand that. So, so I just got to ask you, what happened to all the science before it seemed like this whole COVID thing got, the mask mandates got more, you know, political? Because if you take a look at just what the CDC said, even as in late May, it was citing 10 randomized control trials that showed no significant reduction in influenza transmission with the use of face mask. And it's, and Oxford summarized six international studies which showed that masks alone have no significant effect in interrupting the spread of flu or influenza in the general population nor in healthcare workers. Dr. Fauci even said too, I'm sorry, I always mess up his name, he said, there's no reason to be walking around with masks. This is back in, in March 8th. He even told them on 60 Minutes, 190% of masks only help, only to block large, you know, droplets and stuff. So even the, you know, Surgeon General said that in March 31st, said that there's no reason to be wearing masks, to actually stop wearing masks. So I have an article here, it's based upon, it's got a lot of information in there about, about all these things even before the, this thing probably right around June or so, when all these mask mandates happened, that, I mean, what happened to all of this science beforehand? I mean, if you take a look at, there's been so many studies done on masks and how they don't work. And then on top of that is, is what happens if you wear a mask for actually too long too. There's a lot of studies on that too, that makes like a difference on, kids always touch their face and every time they touch, they touch a mask, it's really not doing any good because they're touching their face and all that other stuff and if it gets wet and stuff like that. And, you know, not only that, it also, there's a lot of scientific data that goes against wearing masks. And so, so what I'm just trying to say is that I actually have a couple of articles here I'd like to leave with you guys, you can, you know, take a look at. It's got references to a lot of, a lot of facts on this, you know, subject. And so it was nice to, nice to talk to, you know, Mr. Doolitz, saying that yesterday that they had like 15 positive cases and this, this morning they had 30 positive cases. That's great, that's great to see this downward trend. But, so I'm just trying to, trying to say that all the research I've been doing on masks saying that masks don't work. I mean, why are we trying to enforce that on our entire public? So that's what I have to say. Thank you, guys, for listening to me and I'll just leave these guys.
Yeah, if you leave them on the, on the table right on the corner there, we can grab them at the end of the meeting.
That'd be fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming in, I appreciate it, yes. Sir, something to say? Yes, please come forward.
I have a simple question for the gentleman. I was just kind of curious about contact tracing, quarantining, and testing after someone has been found positive. I'm just kind of curious about that from some of the comments and I'm just kind of curious, so. That's all I got to say.
Okay. I don't even understand your specific question, though. Is there a specific question there?
It was specific, if. Name and address too, for the record?
Yeah, name and address for the record, sure, certainly.
I'm just, oh yeah, I'm just an outsider from North Dakota, but I was just curious about the gentleman regarding contact tracing, quarantining, and testing.
But what, but what about it?
How soon, how soon do the, if someone's found positive, how soon do they do the contact tracing and the follow-up after they find someone has been found positive with the virus? That's my question.
Sure, okay, very good. Mr. Doolitz, at what point, I assume that if somebody's found positive today, you start contact tracing as soon as possible, right?
So, yes. So, excuse me. So when we get results in, when we get a result in that somebody is positive, generally we start the contact tracing process within an hour or two, you know, between one and about 12 hours after we get that positive case result in. Occasionally with the number of new cases, it's been, you know, it has been within a day. So, you know, we contact them within a day of getting those results in. We do an interview with them, we ask them about their symptoms, we ask them about their, you know, potential exposure, we determine their exposure, and then we do the contact tracing process where we're asking them about anybody that they've been around in the, since their symptoms started and two days before their symptoms started during their infectious period. And then we're asking them about any, so any contacts that they've been within six feet of, for longer than 15 minutes. After that, we get them set up for a monitored isolation. So most of the time, that's, that's an email monitoring system that they are able to voluntarily sign up for because we want to stay in contact with them. So that just sends them an email every day. They just let us know that they're still isolating. When they're on isolation, we want them to stay in the residence. And then after 10 days after their symptoms started or 10 days after their tests, if they're asymptomatic, then we release them from isolation. And then anybody that we, that were close contact, it's 14 days after, after their last exposure.
Thank you, Michael.
Have a good script now.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Appreciate it. Appreciate everything public health does for us. Yes, Mr. Weber?
Very quick, my apologies. The reason I was asking for name and addresses, the last couple of weeks, Mr. Reinhardt, Mr. Waterman, and Dr. Gulick has spoken, and I've been trying to contact them for interviews for a research project at UND. And it's helpful if we get that information. I think it's standard process to get that. So that, that's the reason I was asking for that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any other comments? Anyone else from the?
I just have one question.
Certainly.
Question for Mr. Doolitz.
It's Mr. Doolitz.
Mr.?
Yeah, Doolitz.
May I speak up?
Yes.
These type of questions probably should be.
Should be taken offline, certainly. I understand that. And I was going to mention that if you actually have questions specifically for the public health department, we should get you in contact directly with them rather than during the council meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep, certainly. Any other comments? Hearing none. So a motion to adjourn. Weber, second by Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, September 14th. Under item one, call to order, 1.1, welcome and roll call. Weigle?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Ma?
Here.
Kavami's absent. Sandy's here. Veen?
Here.
Great, we have a quorum under item two, discussion items, item 2.1. Wait a minute, so yeah, COVID-19 cares funding application. Mr. Phelan?
City Council President, members of the Committee of the Whole City Council. We briefed this a little bit last week and tonight we're here to seek a recommendation to the city council meeting next week. The administration, as noted in the staff report, recommending that we kind of move forward in three different ways to, as part of this really tremendous COVID funding that we're going to receive here, 3.6 million. So number one, our number one priority is to reimburse ourselves with COVID-related expenses we already have had, to move forward with additional COVID-related expenses we anticipate having to the balance of the year and more importantly into next year as the public health department will, they'll expire their funding here at the end of the year. So we want to keep those temporary folks, keep the team together into next year. The other parts are to move forward with some of the things that we added to eliminate from our budget in the general fund primarily. Those are capital projects, primarily police and fire. They were capital reserves and those were all reduced in our 21-city budget due to reduced revenues related to COVID. So it would be to put those items back in. There is an item for the Alara Center and Council member Veen was at a finance committee last week with the Alara Center to put in, because that's a well-visited facility. We should probably do some upgrades there. We're also looking at some upgrades at other city facilities too. I think Councilmember Weber, you had mentioned that last week, so we're going to follow up on that too. First one out is the Alara Center, is one of our important visitor-type buildings. And then finally, the Siren is another one-time project and we've talked a lot about this. That's 1.6 million. We did have it previously in for the state priority dog funds. We're not sure if we're going to fill that bucket so that we receive our 2.5 million, but in advance of that, this is really a high priority project. So our thought is to move forward with fund this project. If we do receive the 2.5 million dollars sometime next year, we'll just push that off into street infrastructure projects. So we think we should move this forward at this point in time. And, you know, I think City Council President Sandy and Kavami last week, they kind of pushed us into, let's make sure the school district keeps performing and let's be thankful. It's their third week, school district's still in class and a lot of people didn't predict they'd make one week, so here we go. Doing a great job. So we did follow up. There's a list that we got from the school district administration. We had a meeting late last week and I think what we've picked here is probably the closest thing to, we'll call it contact tracing or things that we're currently doing. And that, these are these isolation rooms that they're having, they're, they have temporary workers, paras, and then those sorts of things that are helping to staff those. Again, that kind of fits well within our public health funding too because it's temporary positions that are going to go away because you're always worried about getting one federal money and then it goes away and then you create longer-term expenses. And I think with all of our priorities, we haven't, we haven't done that in any case. So what we're recommending along with the city funding is that we would move forward with that school district funding for the isolation areas. The total amount is 475,000. We would fund a portion of that for our first tranche of money and then we're anticipating receiving what we think is 1.7 million, could be as much as 2 million here shortly. Then we would fund the next, the next part with the additional money that were coming. And these are temporary positions, so you got to spend the money before you can get reimbursed. So I think it will time out pretty well as we move forward. I just wanted to also point out, you know, with, with the funding of the school district, anticipating that we would receive about 1.7 million dollars in additional funds, we would still have about 1.4 million dollars remaining to further allocate, further come back to city council. If we receive up to that 2 million dollar mark, that'd be the 1.7 million, we'd still come back and ask for, where should we prioritize that spending? The school district also discussed that they may receive additional funding from cares via the state of North Dakota. And I'm just kind of looking through what they have said, you know, their current deficit, if you look at the spreadsheet, is 1.7 million dollars estimated with our city allocation that we would bring in 475,000 to that. They're anticipating possibly receiving, they said 600,000 to 700,000 additional in cares funding from the state of North Dakota. So if we all add that all up, they still would be in and around 600,000 dollars in deficit still at that point. So I think with our assistance, they're quite enthusiastic, they're quite thankful for not only Council President Sandy and Mayor Vuchensky pushing this forward, but the entire city council that's even willing to consider this. They never thought we'd be at this point. They are, tonight, as we mentioned, there is a school district meeting. Also wanted to mention the county is looking at allocating some of their cares funding for rural school districts, for school nursing. So I think we're all trying to do our part to keep schools going, whether it's the city, county, and the school district. And it's, hopefully, it's, I think it's a really great story. There's one thing to say, we all, you know, support one another, we all love those kind of support. The other thing is to really support them with dollars and time, of which this really is, and coming together. So with that, that's our recommendation. We anticipate still having money left over to come back here with, supporting the school district. They may still have a deficit at the end of the day, but we'll know more in a month or two with how things all shake out with all the different organizations. So it's everyone working together. I think Marine's still out there virtually. Just to follow up with, I'll put a period on it, see if anything that I missed along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Ms. Thorsted, any comments?
Thank you, Todd. President Sandy. Todd did a really nice job recapping all that. Maybe I'll just add that these funds are very timely. It'll, it'll be very good, number one, to fill some unmet needs that we're unable to get into that 2021 budget. Now, with this, we'll fund some of that needed capital and also reimburse for some of those expenses that we've incurred, as well as, like Todd had stated, give some security to the public health department on some of their staffing needs, as well as some other capital items. With that, I think Todd covered everything well with the school and the county working in parallel with the school district in the county. I would just possibly add that if this allocation meets your approval, I would just also request in the motion to also approve the associated budget amendments that would go along with that allocation.
Thank you, Ms. Thorsted.
Mr. Weigle, comment? Mr. Weber, or not Mr. Weber, I'm sorry, I looked at you and said, Mr. Weber. Good to see you. Have we reached out at all to our, I believe we got three private schools in Grand Forks? Have we reached out to them? I understand we're, I kind of, in a way, I struggle with this because we're giving half a million dollars to another taxing entity. I understand how important it is for our schools to remain open. So with that, I'd also like to include the opportunity for our three private schools as well, to possibly leverage some funding. If we're, if we're giving out half a million, then I think we should also include, include those schools too because obviously they, they are very important in providing education for our children as well.
Council President Sandy?
Mr. Phelan?
I think I, I recall a conversation and I'll follow up with Scott Burry, who's the business manager for the school district. He did mention, they did receive some cares funding and that they did allocate some to the area of private schools. I can follow up on that matter regarding that issue. So maybe if you don't mind, before the city council meeting, I'll follow up the school So maybe if you don't mind, before the city council meeting, I'll follow up the school district to see how, you know, whether it's parochial schools, Catholic, or other private schools, and how they've helped support them.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Gangler. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Weigle?
Yep.
Yeah, excellent. Other comments? Mr. Weber?
I believe I know the answer to this, but these funds, these federal dollars, there's a lot of federal dollars rolling around. These are all separate from the 1.3 million that Public Health received, from the EDA funding that we're applying for, for the Herald Building. These are all separate.
Yep. Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber, they are. I think the state decided just to give block grants to municipalities like Grand Forks as opposed to reimbursing, and they found a way forward with, you know, the 13 large cities across the state. So it's really a great thing. And I think the impression was that local leaders know how to best invest these funds where they need to, and do it on kind of a formula basis. And I think the emphasis was try to do what you can to help taxpayers in your community. I think we're doing that with these funds. We're really assisting in funds. We'd have to come up in the general fund, or in the future, whether it's capital, try to find general funds. So we really have followed through on that guidance.
And it's a separate issue, but you mentioned it with the Alara Center. I don't want to be, I don't want to ask city staff to go chase down rabbit holes and spend a bunch of money, but checking on the air exchange systems, the filtration systems, is that something you can go to the blueprints and go up on the roof and look at the filter and get that kind of information relatively easily? Or is this an expensive and long-term process?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber. Well, last week, you missed a Finance Capital Committee meeting, and I think we, for an hour and a half, we talked about HVAC systems. So it was quite enlightening. But really, what they have is, in that case, they have EAPC as their mechanical engineering professional, but really was Johnson Controls, which does some of our buildings. I think we need a professional like that to come through to see how best we can do things, because you can certainly do more air exchanges. That requires more energy, and then they were talking about certain filters, and then these hydrostatic or static machines. I don't think it's hydro. It's not water, but whatever those static machines are. So there's a variety of different things. I did follow up with Johnson Controls, who does many of our services, some of our city buildings, and they'd be willing to take a tour and see what could be done in some of our other buildings. Also, as part of having them run efficiently, yet have some safeguards regarding any of these various viruses that are going around.
So whether this is a reasonable ask or a rabbit hole, you're still in the process of trying to make that determination?
Yep. I think what we would do is, we would do tours, get some recommendations back about how to move forward, similar to what we did. We really, we started out with the Alara Center because there were some grant opportunities. So we thought, let's move forward with the Alara Center as one of that prime building where people are coming and going.
Yes.
Sometimes we forget to ask about ourselves or think about ourselves. And as I was sitting there, I thought, well, we should probably look at other city buildings where they're well occupied, whether it's City Hall, fire stations, police departments. So we'll follow up on public works. We'll follow up with those buildings, too.
Very good. And then my last question is, is it okay for a single motion on this, or do we need multiple motions? And are you even looking for a motion tonight, or is this just, you are looking for a motion?
I would say approve the funding allocation, as noted, along with an associated budget amendment.
So moved.
So there's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Dockler. Are there other comments? I, for one, am very happy that we've put the police and fire capital reserve back into, in this, fulfilling that budget requirement. And certainly, the Siren, as Ms. Mock mentioned last week, being able to get the Siren capital expense done is great for our community, because other communities are going to be paying for that for quite some time. So I really, last thing I'll say is regarding the school district, I for one am probably one of the most vocal critics of our school system and the school board in general. But in this situation, and so because of that, I'm probably one of the last people that would ever want to give the school district money. But I look at this as economic development. If the students don't remain in school, we put our economy in a very critical, potentially critical position. And so I think that this is a great opportunity for us to take funds that we got from the feds that we weren't expecting in the first place and help our neighbors across town, because they certainly could use the help right now. So, Mr. Weigle?
I don't disagree with you. And if that's the case, then I'd like to open up to our private institutions as well, to have an opportunity, if there are some needs, because there are also hundreds of children that go to those schools as well, that it also is economic development. So.
I wasn't trying to exclude them. I think we need to keep the schools open.
Yep. So I don't know if we need to formally put that in the motion, or ask for an amendment to that motion, or what we need to do, but.
I think we probably don't, because we can always amend it at the City Council when Mr. Phelan comes back with more information.
Perfect. Thank you.
And by then, they may have a plan that says, hey, we've got an idea. At the next round, let's do X, Y, Z, or whatever, right?
Thank you.
Is that reasonable, Mr. Phelan?
That is. Thank you, Council President.
So there is a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.2, consideration of city share of project numbers 8098, 8124, 8158, 2020 Millen overlay. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Good evening. Council President Sandy, City Council. Before I get into the actual details of this thing, I want to give you a little bit of background, again, reminder of some of the special assessment process. By state law, special assessments, one of the things that we do is we publish in the newspaper the district that's created and the estimated costs that are going into the district. In addition, the city sends out several mailings directly to individuals within the special assessment district. The first letter that goes out is based on a preliminary distribution of benefits by the Special Assessment Commission, the district boundaries that's set up by the City Council, and the engineer's report based on the cost of the project. The individuals within that district will get a letter, and it basically notifies them of the special assessment, some background of the project, and it will give some dollar ranges in there. The dollar ranges in that first letter that's based on preliminary numbers, they basically take the engineer's report, the dollar amount, go minus 10%, plus 25%. That gives a range. So people have a general idea what the cost of the project and their special assessments might be. After that, you know, the project goes to design. It actually goes out to bid. Once the project is bid, there's another letter that goes out. And that letter that goes out, matter of fact, I'll read part of it in here, because there's some important words in the letter itself. The letter that goes out says, the cost, this is the second one now, "The cost to your property is estimated based on the bid amount, and could vary from the actual cost if change orders increase or decrease bid quantities. To give you some idea of your share, we have conferred with the Special Assessment Commission and have arrived at an estimated cost for your property." And then there's, again, a range of numbers that's given on the bottom of that sheet. If you look at the page two of your report, you will actually see a copy of, you know, what that, those bid numbers look like. Essentially, they take the bid price, 0% to 15% is how they come up with those numbers. Again, there's nothing magic in state law relative to the 15%. There's nothing requiring us to do these individual notifications. These are all policy decisions that we've developed over the years with the City Council. So with that background, we have done a Millen overlay project. We've combined a number of projects, a number of individual districts within one project in order to get economy of scale on the bids. Within those projects, there were a couple of smaller projects that did exceed the 15% that we referenced in the letter. The one is in the Shady Ridge area, court area, and the other is Charwood and Delwood Court. Charwood, Delwood are essentially just cul-de-sacs. They're very, very small locations. Even Shady Ridge is a relatively small area. And so within those two areas, we did exceed the 15%. Now, we're going to have special assessment hearings coming up next week with the Special Assessment Commission, and then in October, there will be a hearing that comes to the City Council before we certify specials for the year. So those things will come back. In the meantime, another letter has gone out, a final, we call it the final letter, that's based on the estimated project costs, a specific number to the individuals as to what their special assessment is calculated out to be. The letters that have gone out to that, at that, with those numbers, have included the overage of 15%. It's all of the numbers going in, okay? So they weren't reduced. So again, on the second page, if you look at it again, I'll just use Shady Ridge, the second letter, bid plus 15% is $1,121 to $1,289. The final assessment, that's the last letter that they received, is $1,532. So again, that's if we special assessed all of their 15%. The question may come up at some point, and it came up internally, because we represent the number, a qualified number of 0 to 15%, should there be some consideration of the city picking up that, those dollars that are in addition to the 15% number? City staff tussled around with that for a while. You see, our staff report does recommend that the city would pick up the 15% overage. And I will tell you, probably the deciding factor in my mind, why that's the appropriate recommendation for staff to make, particularly, these projects are paving. They're protestable. You can protest the project by law and get rid of the project with petitions from your neighbors. The, at least theoretically, the decision to protest or not protest should be based, at least in part, on the dollar amounts that you're seeing coming through the letters. And so in my mind, I think that we should probably, assuming that they didn't, we didn't get a protest, so they didn't protest, it may or may not have been because of the numbers represented, but I think if the numbers were higher, somebody may have protested, and now it's too late. So again, I think that probably is the determining factor. There's lots of pros and cons we can talk about, about picking up the costs or not picking up the costs. I will say that I don't have a recollection that we've had another project that succeeded the 15%, so it's a very rare occasion that it occurs. We want to keep it that way. Matter of fact, we may take some additional steps just in engineering to help prevent that from moving folk, you know, coming about in the future. But having said that, it has occurred, and I guess we're just looking for some policy guidance relative to, you know, what we should do with those special assessments. Purely a policy decision.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Any comments or thoughts?
That was a subtle set of circumstances. Explained well, and I'm, I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Second by Mock. Further discussion? Mr. Veen, any thoughts?
It's like, I think, six and one-half dozen of the other when it comes down to it. The additional cost. The additional cost at least went into the surfacing they got. So they truly did get a benefit. It isn't like it was an erroneous number that was put out there.
Sure.
On the other hand, it doesn't happen very often, and these are quite small numbers. I mean, for the two courts, you're talking $369. It's going to be divided up amongst probably.
About 16.
16 properties. And it's going to be assessed over how many years?
Twenty years.
Those are over, I believe, they're only over 10, because it's a.
So again, you're going to take that small of amount, you're going to assess it over 10 years. It's pretty insignificant, but it's still a number. I mean, when you look at it. And Shady Ridge is a little bit bigger, but there's a lot more property, or there's bigger properties that are going to, and again, the additional overlay is additional asphalt that adds longevity. It isn't like we're taking anything from them. And I will say, we go really, I think we do a great job, maybe even overboard, on notifying these people every step of the way, there's of these costs. And you don't get any comments back. In fact, I think I've gotten the letters, and I've not really paid much attention to it. But you do bring up a thing. At some point, somebody might have protested had they not. I think that would be the only thing that kind of puts me as, I can go either way if it was, but I'm, and again, this is not a big dollar amount for the city either. I mean, as far as relative to all the projects, we go, we have change orders that go way more than the cost of these. So I can go along with the motion and take care of it, so.
My only concern is the precedent we're setting. So assuming we're not going to be held, maybe that's a question for the city attorney. If we do this in this circumstance, and three years from now, there's a huge project where we go over by a half a million dollars, are we going to be on the hook to pay for it?
I think you're spot on, President Sandy, and maybe it's a matter of modifying the motion to indicate in projects that are, in the City Council's determination are small in amount, we would cover the excess cost so that you've got some ability to modify it later on.
I'm happy to make that amendment.
Amendment to your motion, and are you okay with seconding that? Very good. In that case, any other comments?
If I could.
Of course.
Just one comment. You know, over the years, when these things have come up, a lot of times, these motions come up at the Special Assessment Commission meetings, when property owners will show up to kind of challenge the assessments. And that's when we've oftentimes come back and looked at, did we make a mistake or whatever? That's been years ago. With sewer separations and lots of projects, if I remember right, that some of that was challenged when there was some fairly big changes between them. But I can live with this amended motion. I think I'm fine.
Excellent. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grasser, Mr. Gosstead for your assistance. Item 2.3, decision document for project number 848, reconstruction of North Third Street from University Avenue to Demers. Mr. Danielson, good evening.
Evening, President Sandy, and members of the committee. So what you got before you is a decision document for the reconstruction of North Third Street, and the limits of the project are from University Avenue up to Demers Avenue. So about three weeks ago, we brought this item to a council, a committee meeting, an informational item. And at that point, we discussed that there's been engineering going on this project for about a year now. And as part of that, we've gone through the public input process, and we've done quite a bit of effort in getting as much public input as we could. And this project has been going really smoothly in the fact that what we anticipated being the preferred design alternatives and the preferred design concepts for the public actually aligned with what the public was wanting, what a majority of the public telling us that they would like. So as part of our engineering process, we had multiple different design concepts. And the two primary ones that came down to the public input meetings and what we felt would have the most, the most to talk about at public input meetings were the parking orientation and the method in which the road would be constructed, in which it's either one phase or multiple phases of construction. So the different decisions that we presented at the public input meeting can be found on the second page of your staff report at the top. So like I said, we were met with the circumstance where what we thought the public's preferred concept would be was in line with what it actually was. So we're looking to narrow down the alternatives for the documented categorical exclusion document, which will be at a further committee meeting. And by narrowing down all of our alternatives prior to getting to that meeting and that decision, we can eliminate the amount of time that our consultant has to spend on developing each and every different alternative that would have been included in that CADAEX document. So we're trying to save some consulting fees, because this project is very legale with the federal cap that we have for this one. It's a federally funded project, and we have a limit as to how much we can actually use of federal dollars. So it's likely that we're going to exceed that, and in that case, we're going to try and save as much dollars as we can upfront with our engineering costs. So like I said, we had a couple different alternatives, the parking and the construction phasing. And the three options for the geometric alternatives or the parking alternatives are at top of the second page of your staff report. And the public's preferred opinion and what we figured their opinion would be, would be to recap the road as it is, as it exists right now, which is with diagonal parking on one side and parallel parking on the other side. And this is majority probably leaning towards the fact that it saves the most parking spaces. And then the second decision item being the construction phasing. And then the second decision item being the construction phasing, whether it's completed in one phase or broken down into multiple phases. And the public's preference and what we kind of expected to be the preference there was also that it get constructed in one phase so that it can shorten the overall length of the project. So with that, staff is recommending to move forward or to select the following alternatives for the decision document for the reconstruction of North Third Street, where we have the two alternatives that I just went over there.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson, any comments? Mr. Weigl?
Just looking at the design that's in here, and I haven't been downtown on Demers for quite some time, is there bump outs there currently?
There is not currently bump outs on North Third Street, but they would be included in this new design.
Okay, didn't we?
There are not bump outs currently on Demers.
Right.
I don't, although it shows bump outs on Demers, but I don't think they're going to be adding them, because that road has already been done.
Right, and that's what I want to make sure of, because it shows on our documents, but.
Mr. Danielson, can you confirm, we're not going to tear up Demers again, are we?
No, we are not going to tear up anything on Demers. That's just, I think they just extended the rendering of that over onto Demers, but no, Demers would not have those bump outs going into Demers Avenue.
Excellent, but we would do all four corners of...
First and second.
First and second, though, excellent.
Correct.
Yeah, that's great, so any other, thank you, Mr. Weigl, Mr. Weber, yes, sir?
Mr. Danielson, the two alternatives, the geometric alternatives and the construction phasing, I believe you've mentioned that public input supported 1A and 2A. I'm guessing 1A was supported quite strongly, was there some controversy around 2A and 2B?
When it comes to construction phasing for 2A and 2B, it was a little bit closer, and that one, we had a public input meeting, and we also reached out to the DDA to help us kind of get their majority opinion of their members, and at the public input meeting, that issue wasn't really solidified one way or the other, but the information that we were given by the DDA leaned more heavily towards 2A. So it was on the fence until the DDA gave us the opinion of their constituents.
Can, without going into too much detail, can you give me a quick understanding of the one phase, how long are we expecting that to be, and what would the two phases be?
So as far as overall construction time for the project, we don't have a number or a, I don't have an absolute guess for that, but the discrepancy between one phase and multiple phases is estimated to be about a month of total construction time.
The single phase would be a month of construction time?
No, I think you're saying you save a month.
You save a month by going with the single phase.
Correct.
Right. Another quick question, the decorative lights, the pillars that we've been talking about for Demers, we anticipate doing, possibly doing something similar, if not the exact same thing on Third Street. There's been some discussion about the possibility of those changing lights, color, to coincide with the changing colors on the bridge. Do you know, or does anyone else know, does that require special wiring? Does the current wiring along Demers accommodate that change of colors, and would we be using the same wiring on Third Street?
Committee President Sandy and members of the committee, I don't personally know the answer to that question, and I'm not sure if maybe Al or Dave is sitting out there yet, but they may know the answer to that, but I personally don't know the answer to that question.
We're just putting power out there, so the light fixtures themselves will be the ones that change color, right?
And the wiring is not an issue in that?
Yeah.
The wiring is, whatever happens will be able to happen with the wiring under any alternative.
Very good.
It's, you're correct, it's the lights themselves that provide the color difference, and a controller.
Thanks for that clarification, I'll move approval with 1A and 2A.
Great, there's a motion, is there a second? Second by Veen, motion by Weber, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 2.4, thank you, Mr. Danielson, item 2.4, property acquisition, 1002 University Avenue. Mr. Cranko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. This item is before you again, or I should say for purchase agreement portion of it. This property was brought up previously as the property itself has a driveway that's approximately seven feet from the nearest railroad track over on University Avenue. The city attorney has gotten a favorable agreement put together with the representative of the seller of the property, and negotiated a purchase price of $70,000, as well as some additional contingencies along with that purchase, which includes city council approval of the agreement. Closing of the purchase is contingent upon an environmental review of the property and a favorable Phase 1 environmental review, which is estimated to cost the city approximately $2,000. Closing is also contingent on the seller having a marketable title, and that no one is living on a property, and there are no existing leases for use of the property as well. Additionally, along with this purchase, working towards a future railroad safety improvement project, we also received notification earlier today of the North Dakota Department of Transportation soliciting for railroad transportation safety projects. So this is kind of fortuitous timing. And with that, staff is recommending approving the purchase agreement for 1002 University Avenue, any necessary budget amendments, and also authorizing the city staff to obtain quotes to demolish the property, so we can keep this project moving along.
Thank you, Mr. Cranko, yes, Mr. Gosdard?
Yeah, President Sandy and council members, just so you know, I think there is a purchase agreement that was part of the packet that you received, that's, there were some modifications to the agreement that we developed later this afternoon that are, I find to be acceptable, and there is an addendum to the purchase agreement that I prepared over the weekend that will be part of it as well, that has all the contingencies in it, so.
Very good, is there, I have a question, is there a reason why we're not trying to sell the property and have somebody move it versus tearing it down? Yeah, Mr. Gosdard?
I didn't follow your question, is to move the building and...
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Cranko mentioned that we're looking for contractors to demolish it.
Oh.
Why are we not trying to sell it or give it away or something?
I was going to say, I believe also in removing the property or removing the structures on the property itself, we would also need to disconnect the existing utilities and the services for that. Think it would probably just be simpler to demolish the property.
I think we should have a further discussion on that some other day, but I would highly recommend we think about that, David, if there's any way we could just even give it to somebody that might want to move it, so. There's a motion, and is there, there was a motion and a second, right? Yeah, I'm losing my mind.
I don't remember that, I'll move approval, and then to the vote, I have an unrelated question for Mr. Cranko.
Great, so any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, Ms. Weber?
David, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you're good at dancing on your feet here. Next Tuesday evening, I believe, there's a meeting in the Riverside neighborhood about parking, could you speak to that quickly?
Certainly, I want to say July 21st, we ended up receiving a letter with concerns as to speeding vehicles, as well as concerns for pedestrian safety, particularly on the North First Street corridor from Gateway Drive to the Riverside Park area. Engineering department ended up doing a bit of a study in that neighborhood regarding checking vehicle speeds, vehicle counts, as well as looking at the corridor itself. We put together a little report, sent that out to the neighborhood and the concerned constituents out in that area, and we are having a public input meeting over Zoom. I want to say it's September 22nd, from 4:30 to 6:30.
That's my understanding as well, thanks.
Great, thank you, that does lead us nicely into item 2.5, project 8111 Riverside Dam Inspection. Mr. Cranko?
Thank you, President Sandy. This is our annual Riverside Dam Inspection, this is something I end up doing every year. We have a dam in town, it's located on the north side, in the Riverside area, just south of the north pedestrian bridge up there. And this Riverside Dam was originally constructed in 1925, it was rebuilt and reconstructed in 1988, 1989, and it's pretty much there to make sure that the city has ample water supply in case of dry seasons. The annual inspection takes place just to make sure that none of the riprap has been displaced by large moving logs, we don't have large logs that have collected upon the dam itself, secondary damming, which could cause some issues. Other than that, the dam itself, it was previously classified as a medium hazard dam, however, the North Dakota State Water Commission ended up reviewing that and compared it to their previous classification policies, and they have recently reclassified it into a low hazard dam, and that's primarily because if the dam were to fail, it would not have a significant impact on downstream properties. The original reason why it was a medium hazard dam was because of the impacts to the water supply for Grand Forks, and so in order to make it more consistent with their policies and their classification system, they reclassified it to low. In doing so, they do not have a regular inspection once every 10 years, that it's going to rely entirely on us doing our annual inspections and public works going out there and checking it out as well. Overall, the inspection itself, we end up waiting until the river levels get below 18 feet, because if it's much above that, we really can't see much of the dam itself or the other rock rapids, and so that's why we ended up waiting so late into the year, just because of how much rain we've gotten and the flood season that we had. Other than that, we didn't see any additional issues out there. With the dam itself, we did notice that there was a collection of debris on the north pedestrian bridge, and so since the east Grand Forks, public works ends up taking care of that, we have notified them to give them a heads up. And with that, I'm able to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments, questions, receive and file? Very good, thank you, Mr. Cranko. Item 2.6, consideration of bids, bid 2020-41, rock salt for ice control. Good evening, Somerson.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. This is our annual bid, as you stated, for street ice control operations and the salt used in that for the 2020 and 2021 winter season. And we received five bids for rock salt, one of which did not meet specification, and that's itemized on the bid tabulation at the end of the bid tabulation as to why. And with that, we request to approve the bids and award the bid as the lowest and best bid to H&amp;H Trucking of Minot, North Dakota, in the amount of $68,257.
Comments, questions? Mr. Weigl moves approval, second by Mock. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, motion do adjourn.
Thank you.
Mr. Weigl, second by Weber, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night.